The Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody to our meeting tonight. We're glad to have you here and go right off to the business. Item one is the presentation by Salvador Carmona Jr., USMC retired, who's the chairman of our Harlingen's Veteran Advisory Board and also a member and also one of Harlingen's Police Department's finest. He's going to give us a presentation regarding the Reefs Across Americas program. Sal?
Good evening, Mayor.
Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioners and Mr. Sedna. I just wanted to bring this to your attention of what the Veterans Advisory Board has been working on. We've done several projects for the veterans in the valley. And one of the ones that we want to do now is the Reefs Across America, which is a way of honoring all the veterans that have served and given the ultimate sacrifice throughout America. It started in the Arlington National Cemetery and has been moving across America. So now we want to be part of that and help honor those veterans as well. It's a teach program as well where we're teaching to the children the sacrifices that were made and what it takes to have freedom here in the United States. I have with me Lenore Combs. We are both part of the Veterans Advisory Board as well as the Veteran Memorial Project Committee, which is the veterans park out here on Pendleton Park. So this program, Reefs Across America, on December 15th will receive reefs that are either going to be purchased or donated, or we purchase with donated money, funds, and so that we can place them. Our goal is a reef for every veteran's headstone. That is our goal. In the city cemetery, we have 125 veterans interred there. And so we would like to get a reef for each one of those. Our fallback, if we don't have enough for every single one, then we're going to place a ceremonial reef, which is a larger reef and has all the branches of service honored there on that reef. And we can place that at the entrance for the cemetery itself. One of the big things that it's going to take, it's going to take a lot of people as well as the money. So we're going to also be soliciting volunteers to come out there and help us when we receive these reefs. And we're going to have a short ceremony on the 15th there at Pendleton Park. Then we're going to have to disseminate and take these reefs out to the different cemeteries. We have, since we started this program, expanded it to not only F Street City Cemetery, but the San Pedro Cemetery as well, the La Feria Heavenly Grace, as well as the Ashland and Montmeta and Restland. And in Westaco, they wanted to be part of this as well. So we're kind of spanning out as well. But all our funds are dedicated towards taking care of the city cemetery. And then they have their own funds that they're going to generate as well. So the whole goal is to get this out as best we can. This will be our inaugural event. And so we want to make sure we make a good impact so that we can have it for every year thereafter. That ceremony, once again, on December 15th here at the park. There'll be a short cemetery to say what we're doing. And then what we'll do is recognize the cemeteries that are going to be receiving reefs and then the committees or teams that are going to go and take out those reefs to those cemeteries. So the whole goal of it is to remember this veteran. What we'll do is place a reef on the headstone and say that veteran's name, not forgotten. And give them a little salute, a little honors there. So this is our way of saying that they have, we recognize their sacrifice and we still honor what they have done for us. So, once again, just wanted to bring it to your attention, to the Commissioner's attention. We're going to be needing volunteers. We're also going to need donations and we're going to need cooperation. We've had some good cooperation from the Valimour Star. They gave us a good article this past Sunday. And then just as much as we get to work out as possible, hence this presentation. So that way we can make this a successful Harlingen and the Lower Rio Grande Valley. So the last thing we're going to do is take the reefs up on January 19th so that they don't stay there, so they don't become eyesore. They will be collected, so they'll be properly disposed of. And of course, we'll need volunteers for that as well.
Question for you.
Yes, sir.
How much is a reef?
Good point, sir. A reef is $15. One reef is $15. A family member, say we have a family member of a veteran interned in the cemetery, they can request their own reef. On our veterans', on the city's website or the Veterans Outreach website, we have a link to Reefs Across America. They can go directly to that website and then order a reef. It comes to us with the ceremony. And then they can be present to place their own reef on their own loved ones. So $15 for every reef, 125 veterans here at the city cemetery. Any other questions?
Anyone have any other questions for Sal? Sal, thank you very much for that great presentation.
Thank you for the opportunity. We'll have some fires.
Everybody participate in this. This is a great, this is a great program.
We want as much participation as possible. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item two is the approval of the minutes of the special joint meeting of the City Commission and the Development Corporation on September 28, 2018. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Some move, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries. We're going to remove item 3E from the consent agenda. So on items 3A, B, C, D, F, and G, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda on those items?
Some move, Mayor, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries.
3E, right?
All right. We're going to now-
We got the wrong one, Mayor. I apologize. 3F is the one that we need to move. Not 3E. My mistake.
All right, can we have a motion to amend the prior-
I'll make a motion to amend the prior action.
To remove item 3F from the consent agenda and to approve item 3E, correct?
To remove 3F from the agenda and add 3E, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign.
Gabe will present 3F, Mayor.
Do we want to do that now?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor, for item number 3F, the only change you want to make to the contract is on page two. The final year for the term of lease will be, will read from October 1st, 2020 and should end on September 30th, 2021. That's the only change you want to make to the final year of the contract. And with that, staff recommends approval.
All right, is there a motion to then adopt item 3F?
Some moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to take an item out, a couple of items out of the works. And we're going to go to- Just item eight, okay. Item 16 is an executive session on the following items pursuant to chapter 551, sections 551.087, 551.071, and 551.072 of Government Code Regarding Commercial and Financial Information from Business Prospect with which the city is conducting economic development negotiations entered to discuss or deliberate financial or other incentives with the business prospect known as Project Dream and to seek legal advice from the city attorney regarding the subject matter. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Some moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to meet, we need to meet now because of some time constraints and some of the participants of this meeting in executive session. And of course, when we come back, we'll finish with the rest of the agenda. Thanks for your patience. Also like to introduce a special guest, Dr. Guy Bailey, President of UT. RGV is here with us tonight. I'd like to recognize him. Thank you, Dr. Bailey, for being with us. There it is, okay. All right, technically, we're out of executive session at 5:52, but we're going to go right back in on item 15D. I neglected to read this item because it was on an addendum. So we're going to go into, we need to go into executive session on item 15D pursuant to Texas Government Code, section 552.0712, in a matter in which the attorney of the governmental body in Texas disciplinary rules professional conduct in state law of Texas clearly conflicts with the chapter regarding the Harlingen's project. Is there a motion to go into executive session on item 15D?
Some moved, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're back in executive session. Okay, we're back out of executive session at 6:33. So now- I'm going to go to this item where all these people are waiting for. I think, which one is that? Number 11. I'm going to skip down to number 11 because I think some audience members are here for that item. Consideration Impossible Action to Approve or Deny Request from Nancy Fly, Grassroots Headquarters for Betta Aurora to close certain sections of roadways or streets near 201 North First Street from 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM on Friday, October 26, 2018 for a community gathering.
Mayor, we have Maryam Anderson with our police department who will start the presentation. Maryam? I didn't turn on my mic, did I? I turned it on.
Right, the City of Correction and Grassroots Headquarters has submitted a request for street closure. The ensuing question is what's on the road between A, Adam, and First Street? The Harlingen staff is recommended from Capitol Hill because of two reasons. Number one, the businesses in the area have five different terms because they believe it will affect the business. One business requires a day-to-day operation throughout the day for the pickup and delivery. Another business stays open until 8:00 PM. The post-street closure is requested for 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM on a Friday and Monday. And one of the businesses states they're very busy and that it will affect their business. Now, we do have a Plan B. The officers who met with the businesses the first time went back, a second time to meet with them to see if there were any objections to having a street closure on Saturday, which is October 27th. So both businesses stated that they have no objections for a Saturday street closure. One of the businesses will be open, but they will be closed at 2:00 PM. So we're submitting a Plan B for your review.
Okay. All right, I gather there are some people that want to speak about this topic. So come forward, state your name and you give us your address and tell us what you're, tell us what you want to tell us.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Minerva Simpson. I reside at 15701 Perkins Road, Harlingen, Texas. And I'm here to ask for your consideration to deny the motion to close those streets being for the reason that this is not a nonprofit organization nor is it a city-sponsored event. And being historically that those items have not been, that this particular type of event has never been approved before. If it's a community gathering, that they could go ahead and just take the option of doing what most people do, which is to rent one of the beautiful venues that our city has to offer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Sharon Batterson and I live at 1501 North Loop 499 in Harlingen. And I urge the Commissioners also to vote against this. I believe allowing this sets a precedent that any candidate can petition to block off streets for their rallies. This is not for a church, a nonprofit, a school, even for a business, but a politically partisan event. I believe that if you do this, it will set a precedent and then you will have to start letting all candidates from all political parties do the same thing. And I don't think that's something we want to do. Thank you.
Okay, please come forward, state your name and give us your address, please.
Hello, Commissioners, Mayor. My name is Albert Garcia of 1406 Barton Avenue. I'm also a property owner on East Monroe Street. I own, wow. I own, I own a few residences there, apartments. My concern is, I don't represent anybody, first of all. But I represent my tenants and myself. My concern is the health issues. I do have some tenants there that have a health issue. And if there needs to be quick access out, I'm afraid something's going to happen to where their health may be jeopardized in some way. That is, that is probably the most important thing. But now considering, I don't know, I don't represent either side, but I am saying that in this era of, gosh, so much, you know, bashing of each other and this and that, I say just have them do it on their own. As a citizen of this city, it is important just to be able to be neutral as a city and afford them the opportunity to rent one of our beautiful places. Thank you.
Okay, please come forward, state your name and give us your address, please.
My name is Nancy Fly Gunther and I live at 24336 Preston Trail in Harlingen. And when I last spoke with the police department, I did not request an entire block to be closed off. I requested only from the alleyway behind the New York Deli to North First. It's just a small section. And the only reason why we wanted to close off the street is because we are having an event and we know that people will be spilling out into the street. And it was just a safety issue, really. We're not trying to do any kind of entertainment in the street or anything like that. We just wanted to be able to protect the people that will be coming in and out. That's the, that was our only consideration. It's not like we're having this big giant festival or anything like that. But my last, my last request was that we just go from behind the New York Deli to North First Street on Monroe. That, just one little section. So it's, you know, that was a- So, I mean, it's been presented by the police department that we wanted to close down the whole block. And that, that's not our request because we spoke to the New York Deli and they said, no, we're open till 8:00. So I thought, well, we're not going to do that because we don't want to interfere with their business. And so that's why we-
The event is going to be held at the northwest corner of the intersection, the office that's there?
That's correct. It's going to be at that office.
Yeah, I think so, yes. You can ask.
I mean, there's a, there's a nice big parking lot. We're going to have a band in the parking lot. And we're going to have a couple of food trucks on the, on the property.
Really, you don't need the street closed down to do that?
We don't, no, we'll have the event whether or not we get the street closed down. But, but it was kind of more of a safety issue to make sure that people don't get hit by cars coming in and out, that kind of thing.
I have a question.
Sure.
This is a political rally, obviously.
It's kind of more of a get out the vote rally.
Okay, rally, rally.
Yeah.
Why not rent a building? A private building, a city building that's about-
Well, we're, we're, we're having it at our, at our location, at our office, location, but-
What office? Whose office?
It's, it's, it's owned by a man named Tony Ramos.
It's the former law office at the-
It's 201 North, 201 North First.
Okay, so why not hold this in a building that can hold 100 or 500 or 1,000 people?
We're not going to have anywhere near that kind of numbers. I mean, we'd have maybe a couple hundred people at the most.
And I ask why eight hours versus an hour and a half?
We, the event is really just going to go from 6:00 until 9:00. We just wanted to prepare and clean up.
The state's 3:00 to 11:00.
I think it was, I think, right, Diana? Well, I'm going to have Diana come up because she's the one that initially wrote the letter, but-
I'm a little short. I'm Diana Young. I live at 2501 Hocken on the Street here in Harlingen. The owner, Anthony Ramos, is the one that wanted to have some kind of a community gathering. It's not really a rally. It's just a place to come, be together, you know, talk about different things. And it was just to make sure that no one would be getting hurt or anything if, in fact, it did go into the street. Even one lane, I mean, we could have one lane open so cars could go still through the one-way out and maybe just have one lane, just that little section up to the alley, closed.
Okay, what's the, let me, let me ask you. What's the rule on the street closure? What is the criteria? What, what, is it an, is it an ordinance that we have that, that, and who can apply? Who can apply for a street closure? And what are the circumstances? And what are the criteria that we have to consider in order to grant or deny a street closure?
When we look at street closures, we're looking at safety. So when the officers go out there, number one is to make sure that the flow of traffic is, it's okay and it doesn't contribute to any accidents. It is correct that the street closure in this case was only half the street. But this is a one-way street. So traffic flows eastbound in that section. So if a vehicle makes entry into half the street in order to exit, they'll have to travel against traffic to come back out. So that was one of the issues that we had on our end. So in every single case, when we do a, we review a street closures, the officers will go meet with the businesses or the neighbors in the area to make sure that they are in agreement. And second, to make sure that we're not contributing to any safety factors.
Well, if I wanted to have a party for 250 people at my house, I don't have to close the street. I don't have to notify the city. I can just say I'm having that event and people park everywhere and they walk to my house.
On your prop, yes, sir.
Right, and that's the same thing they could do at this property without closing the street.
That's correct.
It's the closing the street that's the problem.
It was just, it was just a safety issue. We thought it would be better than not doing it, you know. But it's, regardless, we're still going to have the event. So, you know, it's not, it's not a make or break kind of deal.
It's not 200 people at one time. They just come in and out and we might have maybe like 30 or 40 at a time.
I had a question for the police department. Didn't, didn't, didn't we not grant Gar-Tuck, we closed off Gar-Tuck, Gar-Tuck for, I think it was during the school board election? Didn't we close off that street at that time?
I do not recall.
Something similar, they were going to get together, they had a big party and they blocked off the street?
That, that is a residential area, so it is possible. Usually what we ask-
Was that the difference because it's residents and-
No, it's the same process. But usually what we ask is a list where the neighbors will sign off saying, I am in agreement. I don't have any problems. And then we present this to the Commissioners.
And so in this case, they went through the same process, but, but there's objection to it?
Correct.
And Ms. Officer Anderson, so have we ever shut down, closed off a street for eight hours or anything? Or how rare is that? Is that usual or unusual, just in your memory?
Well, from the street closures that I personally worked were usually for quinceañeras and it's usually in the evenings when neighbors would make sure that their neighbors came home and parked. Then they would put up the barricades. I'm not familiar with any, anything over four or five hours.
And for the record, catty corner to that location is a city parking lot, which holds at least 50 cars, does it not?
More like 150.
More like, I'm being very conservative. But we, there is plenty of parking and I understand the safety issue.
Yes.
But this isn't really about parking. This is about, you, you wanted to have safety.
Correct.
And, and as Commissioner Yulhorn said, if he's going to have a party, we don't close the street. We just park up and down the street.
That's correct.
All right, I'm going to recognize two more people from the audience and you're getting a second chance. But I don't want to cut off any of the Commissioners from asking questions. Very briefly.
Just a comment, we can, we can reduce the hours if that were to help to do that instead of the 3:00 to 11:00. One of the trucks needed some time to prepare, to prepare their food and stuff. So that's why we wanted it a little bit earlier, but we can always settle.
Are you planning, are you planning to gather in the street? Or are you planning to gather on the 201 North First Street?
It would be on the property of 201 North First.
So you were concerned about parking. And Commissioner Leal has pointed out, they've got lots of parking, just catty corner from there. And probably at that time of night, there's not going to be much, many, many cars in there.
We have-
Okay, gentlemen, sir?
My property is at 109 East Monroe. 50 feet away, there is no parking for my tenants except when there, there's no events. Although it is a great, a great opportunity for the city to have market days, we love it. But we do have some elderly people who live there. And at a drop of a hat, an ambulance would be very difficult to get in there. It is a safety concern and that is my concern. Nobody's asked you though.
All right, you've already registered your opposition, so we get that. Okay, any other, Officer Anderson, did you want to say something else?
No, that is it.
Okay.
So you would prefer Saturday, not Friday?
Right.
Because there's less businesses open on Saturday, less businesses will be affected and theoretically less traffic. Is that correct? Do I understand?
That is correct. And on that Saturday, instead of shutting down half the street, we will shut down the whole street. Therefore, no vehicles will be going the runway at all. We would not have that safety hazard.
Okay, well, what are, what are the wishes of the Commission?
My motion is to disapprove, not to allow.
Motion to deny?
To deny.
Okay, we have a motion to deny. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the motion is, the action is to deny the request. We encourage, yeah.
I don't have any personal problem with the event.
Right.
It's just the closing of the street that's causing the problem.
And so, yeah, and so if, if you weren't, really weren't going to gather in the street and we've identified some parking availability for you in that, in that public parking, hopefully that you'll be able to go forward with, with your event. All right, item, I'm going to, I'm going to have to step out of the chair and pass the gavel to Mayor Protem. I have to go work. I'm going to hear you in the morning. I've got to finish preparing. Fred, the rest of the meeting.
Okay.
I've got to go. Sorry.
Okay, so we'll bring up now item number four. Consideration Impossible Action to Accept or Deny the Donation of 21 6-foot Park Benches from the Sunburst Rotary Club of Harlingen, a nonprofit organization, Parks and Recreation. Mr. Aldean?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor Protem, Commissioners. This request is, of course, to accept a donation of 21 6-foot park benches. And there's some representatives from the Rotary Club here and we also want to recognize them as well. And they're working through the Keep Harlingen Beautiful to purchase these, these benches. And so their thought was, is to increase the number of benches in our playgrounds, the new playgrounds that we built, plus install some at Pendleton Park. And then the rest, we would, of course, put around the city, along the trails and so on. And so that's going to be, of course, at our discretion. But- And so that's gonna be, of course, at our discretion, but we did put this on to, of course, staff recommendations to accept the donations of the 21 benches. There's some gentlemen in the back from-
Aldeir, the quality of the benches would be the same quality as what the city would normally buy, it's just a donation of benches?
That's correct. And what they did was, we made, we put them in contact with our vendor and so they're gonna, they're gonna be identical, same color, same material, so they'll, they won't, they won't look out of place.
This is a good thing.
Yes.
Okay, so any other questions by the commissioners?
No closure of the street?
No, sir.
Last item, sir, last item.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion.
Motion to accept and approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Aldeir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rotary.
Carlos is up next. Item number five, consideration and possible action to approve the proposed branding for the convention center logo.
Mayor Protam, commissioners, we have Clyde Johnson, the C part of B.C. Lynn, is here. They've been working on marketing and branding of the convention center. He brought his, his marketing team with him and they have a proposal that they want the city council to look at, but what we are looking for is action to approve the branding and so that they can move forward with it. So I'll turn it over to Clyde. Thanks for being here.
Thank you very much, commissioners. My name is Clyde Johnson and here with B.C. Lynn Hospitality, working on the convention center. And as Ms. Turner mentioned, I'm here with the Hillmey Production Group with Rebecca Burnsky, Bersky, as well as Alexander Hillmey. Great, we're so lucky to have these folks with us. Luckily, Alexander was born right over here at Valley Methodist and he, and was graduated in 2006 and now living in San Antonio and done quite a lot of work in, in San Antonio and around the state of Texas and for the city of San Antonio. And we think he, they have done a fantastic job here in their presentation and so we'd like for them, I'd like to invite Alexander to come up and, and present the branding and marketing.
Hello, everyone. I'll try to keep this as direct as possible. We were engaged by B.C. Lynn and the hospitality team to help out with the branding initiative for the Harlingen Convention Center. This is gonna be carried in not only through the marketing initiatives, but as well through environmental design, web presence, wayfinding, signage. And so I wanna be sure that we do have, we do garner the buy-in from, you know, everyone up on, up on the podium to be sure that it's well-approved. So if we go to the first page, please? So there's a couple of things here and what we tried to do is really foster the versatility in the mark. Harlingen Convention Center has a lot of letters in it, for lack of a better way to describe it. I think it's 26 or 24. So having that in any way other than a vertically stacked system is really tough because it all of a sudden becomes really linear, doesn't work on, on signage, embroidery, T-shirts, things of the nature, stickers, and thus it starts to get lost. So it's kinda twofold and you're gonna see the versatility here. The actual submark, which is the very wide, broad H on the left-hand side, is derivative of the archways from the architecture of the actual building that's going up, as well as some of the lighting features that are in the lobbies. We're trying to pay homage to what's already being done there, so as a visual tie-in and not a delineation of the two different aesthetics. You can see in conjunction with the vertical stack on the top right, the submark on the, on the left, as well as how the word mark would leave or would read written out in totality. And we'll get that in a couple of, of different renderings in a bit. But playing off of the word mark on the left-hand side would be a call to action for the end user to see on any type of collateral and any type of, of marketing materials, any type of conventional digital advertising initiatives to help raise attention of one of the newest developments in Harlingen, especially with the demographic that it's targeting, be it quinceañeras weddings, any type of medical conferences, anything with UTRGV and anything that's happening. We wanna give it a relatively contemporary look without it completely abandoning a civic nature. And that is kind of why it's sitting right in the middle between something a little more modern and design-forward without being so funky that it, people are like, "I have no idea what this is." So this is completely for demonstrative purposes. It's a rendering. And what you can see here is an example of the lockup breaking apart into the, the naming convention, that's the word mark on the top, as well as the sub in the bottom. And then you're starting to, to see the exploration of color models. So we played off of some of the earth tones, which has to do with not only the city of Harlingen, but some of the colorways that are going into the actual building in the convention center. You see that warm, rich blue, which is a little deeper than the color of the wall painted behind you, as well as the earth tone, and it's actually an off-white cream. So this is the proposed color system, which is going to be the primary color model appended to the identity. So we're gonna go through a couple of concepts here. This is showing the way that the Harlingen Convention, Convention Center word mark would read above the parapet on the roof structure. And some of these renderings aren't going to be completely complementary of each other just because they were coming from different times in the ideation and the development process. So bear with me here, but what you're seeing here is actually a pretty huge, big H at the very, very top, in conjunction with Harlingen Convention Center written out really wide. And I've taken field measurements and photos of all this to actually figure out what's viable versus what's gonna look good on a computer screen and not able to be seen in Again, all we did was remove the, the submark there. There are two opportunities, both on the water feature that's gonna be in the front, as well as a, a standing marquee sign by the entrance and ultimately something that could live as a, as a billboard up closer to the highway. This is just a different isometric view to help highlight it. There's plenty of different signage opportunities with lighting. Obviously, everything would be too code from building and civic, but we can explore that down the road if you guys do buy in on this concept.
Can't see that.
Yeah, this is the one that'd be the hardest to see.
Yes, hard to see.
Yeah, on, on the parapet. You'd be fine from the entrance, the closer you get to the building, obviously, that awning, especially with the grade that it has, makes it a little, little tougher.
Are those lighted?
Oh, they can be.
The H or the letters?
Yes, so the way it's, it's mocked up, particularly on the actual building itself, and let me fast forward here, we would be sure that there were power drops going to it, so they'd probably be backlit or any type of cabinet or channel letters there.
Behind it.
Correct. And then also, I think, bringing the, that widened H towards the front in conjunction with the fountain or any type of marquee sign on the front, making sure that's lit would be a really strong call to action. In looking at some of the design logic behind any type of civic development, which is our primary focus, is urban development, infill, kind of civic improvement, there's a lot in the way of really clean sanserof word marks, but there's never really a solid submark. So I think giving it an actual identity, like what you guys have with the H and the, the star and a swish, would serve really, really well to not actually have to have the word Harlingen Convention Center and still be able to have a recognizable feature. But yes, the short answer, yeah, it can be lit. So going back one, sorry about that. This is kind of outside of the, of the way of what would be expected in any type of convention center, be it civic or a private institution. Really, really strong typography that is oversized, you're kinda going against the grain of any type of design logic here and it's by design. What we wanted to do is be sure that there is a definite point to the city of Harlingen, even though it's not a direct tie-in to the civic identity here. As, there it is again, as well as exploring what the letterhead system might look like. And again, that's showing the versatility of just having the aforementioned mark at the top without having, you know, the, the main eyesight be the, the name of the enterprise? Say again?
The 26 letters.
Right, yeah. And again, here, just a simple mock of what letterhead would look like, any type of invoices going out, thank you letters, any type of raise for donation, any type of announcement. And obviously, in print form, digital would be a whole different ballgame with any type of geofencing, AdWords, retargeted, display network kind of things. But really oversized Harlingen Convention Center, along with the simplicity and kind of juxtaposition on the back. So I believe that is the last slide in this presentation, but overall, wanted to gather your thoughts on everything and ask if we can proceed to move forward through all of the additional phases that we have.
One of the things I was gonna ask is, is we have a couple of instances in the valley. One, the school district at the Performing Arts Center that had some LED lighting to it that changes the color of that building as you drive by. The city of Weslaco had an old water tower that was kind of an eyesore until they LED lit it up at night and now it's like an iconic landmark. And when I saw that H in the back, it was gonna be kind of white, that's what I thought of, is there might be some way to, I don't know, it doesn't have to be a rainbow of colors, it could be whatever y'all thought, but you could light that thing pretty easily.
Sure.
Whatever. Just, just to provide, because I know a lot of people enjoy driving by that Performing Arts Center because it, it circulates through various colors all the time. And so when you drive by, you get to see-
And it could be festive as well.
And it's a pretty building. I mean, it's a nice building. It's not tacky.
On this H, sir, did you have any other options besides that H? Did you go through a group of people that kind of sorted this out?
Yeah.
Like Cardinal logo? Well, no, I was, because I'm going back to the H that we have. I mean, this is our logo, we're kind of incorporated, because honestly, when I look at the, it almost looks like the Under Armour logo. And so I just didn't know if, if it went through a process.
Sure.
Is it your only option or did you have a couple of others?
No, it's a great question. And actually, so when it came back from our design team, we actually entertained the, the similarity to the Under Armour logo. When comparing them, they're drastically different and I think seeing it in isolation like that isn't helping drive that case, but we went through about 20 iterations to get to this. And after presenting to B.C. Lynn, we felt like this was the, the strongest indication of what we were trying to do.
I'm gonna design our business.
Sure, no, no, no. Ask away.
So we, so in, to your, your comment about the H and the iconic, the goal will be to make this, this convention center iconic and, and, you know, allowing financial feasibility as well as just physical feasibility of having that up there and having it lit, you know, we are very much behind that because ultimately, you know, we wanna sell the, the convention center for people to utilize and we want it to be a recognizable spot. And, and, and the, the H that is there, we would like, as you do with any, any logo, Apple, you know, y'all's H, it to be standalone and we want people to feel like it's tied to the city of Harlingen and know that it's a, a, a place that the, the city's own, but it, it is, it's I own, own iconic identity, you know, and it's a little kind of my question.
The only thing I would mention is, is that if the parking lot is lit up with 4,000 Kelvin LED parking lights, you're gonna lose a lot of the effect that I'm talking about with the, so that has to be taken into consideration because if the whole thing's lit up like an operating room, the LED colors are not gonna work.
Probably more of a colored.
When I, when I opened up my packet and looked at this two nights ago, what, what I saw in the H was a couple of things. First, I saw the H, then I, I recognized your arches from the arches of the front of the building, but then I realized where it's located and it's the double flyway. So I saw a bridge. And I thought, I thought the bridge effect draws a lot to our city, we're, we're the crossroads. And you go from one side to the other side across that bridge. And so that's the way I saw it. I, I think whatever you've come up with, you, you were right on.
That is a designed H in there. The bridge as well as the HCC, if you rotate your head right, you'll see two CCs. Trying to have any type of actual lockup between three characters is really difficult, particularly one that's curvy and one that's not. So trying to have it as an acronym-style monogram is just not possible. So yes, what we're seeing is quite a-
What I did like about this is we could've just used our Harlingen logo, but I think it, it, we're upping it up. This is a regional convention center for, for South Texas and we want people to come here and we want it to look like it's a freestanding convention center rather than a, I think it's the word city convention center, but I just think there's, the boldness of, of all the design work that you did with the, the impact of the letters, I mean, it's, it's right on. Right on.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the city commission? Then number five says, consideration and possible action to approve the proposed branding for the convention center logo. May I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign. Motion carries. Number six.
There you go.
Thank you.
For Health Department, consideration and possible action to renew the UT Health Science Center contract to Salud Cis cuenta program to enhance the city's health promotion program by promoting healthy lifestyles and health-changing lifestyles courses and authorize the mayor to sign the contract with attachment.
Good evening, Mayor Protam, commissioners, city manager and city staff. This item is a renewable contract we do every year. This, this time around is, is gonna allow us to, to build up to $60,000 if we renew the contract. We're still performing the same activities as before. We're hosting classes, hosting healthy eating activities as well and numerous activities throughout the city, events that we participate with. We ask that you're allowed to renew this contract.
Okay, are there any changes or any significant changes?
Only the, the portion that's different is it's gonna allow us to, to obtain up to $60,000 if we renew this contract. In case other expenses come up, before it was up to $46,000, so this time we have up to $60,000.
Anything from the commission, questions?
Motion for approval.
Then, okay, first and second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign. Motion carries. Number seven.
Thank you.
Thank you. Fire Department here, consideration and possible action to approve the Fire Protection Service Contract between the city of Harlingen and the city of Combs, Texas, to provide fire protection services for a cost of $95,430.26 payable in quarterly installments of $23,857.56 and authorize the mayor to sign the contract. Sir?
Good evening, Mayor Protam, commissioners, Mr. Turner, good evening. The rate of the fire, for fire protection services for the city of Combs is, as you mentioned, 10 cents per 100 valuation base on that city's 28 certified net tax over value after review by the, their city council. The city of Combs has signed the Fire Protection Service Contract in agreement, which we have for you, with the stated provision, approval of this contract ensures that fire protection services will continue to this community for the agreed-upon compensation of, as mentioned, $95,430.26 for FY '18, 19 payable in quarter installments, again as $23,857.56 on the following dates, December 31st, March 31st, 2019, June 30th, 2019, September 30th, 2019. The, the total amount of cost for that service for last year was 37 and there is an increase of $7,100, $7,175.69.
Over last year.
Over last year. That is correct.
Questions?
I'll answer any questions you might have.
I move approval.
Second, okay, we have it. And so we're voting on the consideration and possible action to approve the Fire Protection Service Contract between the city of Harlingen and city of Combs, Texas, to provide fire protection services for the cost of $95,430.26 payable in quarterly installments of $23,857.56 and authorize the mayor to sign. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign. Motion carries. Number eight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number eight, planning and zoning. Mr. Rotary, go.
Thank you, Mr. Protam, commissioners. Continuing with the project timeline for the voluntary annexation of 8.95 acres, the applicant is, is also proposing to subdivide the subject property into one lot for residential under the name of Dominguez subdivision. The developer will be responsible for all infrastructure provisions, including street development, street lights, water and wastewater services, stormwater and other requirements specified under the subdivision guidelines. Water and wastewater disposal for this subdivision is being provided through the Harlingen Waterworks. And it's also requesting, and I know that there's probably a typo, this is gonna be for residential R1, not L1, as you can see on the notes, but the, the ordinance itself is correct. It says- It says R1.
And there's already an existing home there, right? Or is he going to build a home?
If anything, he would have to build a home, so it's empty.
Okay, so when he does that, is there going to be a fire hydrant required?
There may be through the subdivision ordinance, yes, sir.
Right, does he, he knows that?
Yes, sir.
Because that's the next thing that will come.
That is correct. In addition, access to this lot would also be, have to be developed.
Okay, so let me read number nine, or number eight officially. Consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on the first reading to annex and to establish the initial zoning to residential single-family R1 district for 8.95 acres out of Block 35 Petersburg Syndication subdivision located on the east side of Park Lane East, north of Spur 54. The applicant is Dustin Moore of Moore Land Serving LLC, care of Daniel Dominguez. So any other questions? Motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Second, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign, opposed, motion carries. Number nine, consideration and possible action to approve a lease purchase agreement with Yamaha for 65 golf carts to be used at Tony Butler Golf Course and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement. Yes, sir?
Good evening, Mayor Portem, Commissioners. We have a, before you, we have a lease of 65 carts. First of all, we have 75 carts in our current inventory, which get rented out. We have 25 2014s, 25 2015s, and 25 2016s that are set to expire December 31st of 2018. So we're looking at entering to a lease with Yamaha, buy board contract for 65, not 75, but 65, going from electric carts to gas carts. In this, we would trade in the 75 carts for 82,500, and we would have five payments of $54,444 for five years. Staff recommends approval of the purchase in 65 carts.
So there's a couple of differences here, Commissioner Mayor Portem, in that the carts that we have right now are electric carts. We have 25 that have been down for a little while because they need batteries. We're going to trade those off for these 65. These new carts are gas-powered, they have a regular gasoline engine, they're very quiet from what I understand, and they don't use much fuel. So we're looking for them to save us a little bit of money, I think they're more economical from what we pay on the electricity charging cost. So on the budgeting side, we do believe we can make up some money and cover this cost for year one, and we are working on some options for the golf course for years two and forward. So we will bring that back to the council for consideration in the near future.
And how long is this lease?
Five years.
Five-year lease.
Do we have gasoline at the cart barn out there, or just diesel for the equipment? So the one more and everything run on gas, too?
Both.
Okay.
I'm asking, how do they start, is it a push-button start?
Same as key.
You push the accelerator and it starts on its own?
Correct.
And you turn the key on, push the accelerator, and it just starts and goes?
It works very similar to the electric.
Okay, so the total cost of this is $250,000, $200,000?
$200 and...
And, and, isn't the golf course losing money right now? So how were, how were we suggesting we pay for it?
We have 38, you guys want to answer that?
Well, and here, one of, before you answer that, my second question is, do we need 65? Because how many, because I understand that the rounds are down, or how, if you're, if right now you're only using 50, is there, is there a time you're without carts, or?
We are getting more tournaments. When we have tournaments, if we don't have at least 65, we're going to have to rent additional carts, as it is, we rent carts as.
That's what we're doing right now.
So that would, that would be an additional cost.
Okay, I just, they're, they're replacing 75 with 65.
And we do, and I, I do see the golf course as, as a great amenity that we've had in our city for a very long time, and I think a lot of folks do come here. We're still enjoying, what, over 40,000 rounds of golf, even, even the fact that we're down from 65,000. That's 40,000 folks that are coming to our golf course and playing a round of golf a year. That's a lot of folks.
So, okay, how are we going to pay for it?
What are you going to do is? Car washes and bake sales.
Cookies, you forgot about the cookies.
About $38,000 in depreciation there that we have set aside, and then the other part is going to be through salary savings for the first year payment.
And you're, you're making lease payments already, aren't you now?
Yes.
Right, so we, we got a net.
And so Yamaha is going to buy that lease out at the end of the year.
And at the end of the five-year lease, the carts are not ours, do we have an option to purchase?
The...
At the end of the five-year lease for the 65?
With $1.
$1.
And it's a standard agreement that's approved through buy board?
Correct.
Right, so we're getting them at the same price as everybody else?
Correct.
But we have the ability to keep them?
We, we will buy them out at a dollar per cart.
Yeah, $65.
After the five years.
After $300,000.
$300.
And this is just one part of our plan, because we've been needing, got to be...
Understood.
We're trying to improve the image of the Tony Butler Golf Course.
We are having challenges with our existing carts, and we need to do something now.
Right, right. Right now, we're down 25 carts, we've been down 25 carts for, and so if you want to talk about a revenue killer, it's not having the carts when we need them.
I usually want, I mean.
Okay, any other questions? Then I need a motion to approve the Yamaha 65 golf carts.
So we do need the 65, we can't do with 50 right now?
Almost just for approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, have a good evening.
We'll move on to number 10. Consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on the first reading amending Chapter 28 license permits and miscellaneous rest regulations by adding Article 11 XI, dockless vehicle permits, and to amend Chapter 18 of the master fee ordinance to reflect fee changes. Parks and Recreation, Mr. Avia.
Before having it get started, I would like to recognize Ron Garza, our Executive Director of the Royal Grand Valley Development Council. We've been working with Ron to prepare this ordinance that you're, you're going to hear in just a couple of seconds, and he brought with him one of the bicycles that's going to be utilized. So, thank you for being here, Ron, appreciate that.
Okay, so, the, this ordinance here would allow us to, to issue a permit and regulate the dockless vehicles in the city of Harlingen, and so, as Dan referenced, we've been visiting with, with Ron and working on this ordinance. And so, the, there is an application fee, I won't go through the whole thing, but I'll kind of summarize it, but there is an application fee of $500, there's a reapplication fee of 300, the permit is good for one year. The operator will have to rebalance and relocate any bikes in the area that are in areas, say, if they're in a sidewalk, or they're in an area that we, we're not allowing to be moved within four hours. And this is during the weekday from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And 12 hours, any other time, if it's a holiday, or if it's after hours, they have 12 hours to move that, that bike. They're all GPS, they have GPS capabilities, or they have the GPS on them, so they'll be able to track them. And so, the permit fee is $1,000 for the first 100 bikes, and that's what staff is recommending, is that we limit it at 100 bikes. And the other thing that I want to make note of is, we need to make a few changes to the ordinance that we provided to you, and it is Section 28 to 11. And this is, this references the allowing bikes on the public sidewalk, and so that would be in violation of our current city ordinance, and so we remove that. So now it will read, it shall be unlawful to ride dockless vehicle on a public sidewalk.
That's on page eight.
That's on page eight, yes, sir.
The letter N.
Yes.
Didn't we have like a 96-inch minimum or requirement?
Sidewalk.
Yes, on sidewalks.
So you can't ride one on a 96-inch?
You can't ride them.
Period?
Period.
We have an ordinance prohibiting.
Yeah, and I think the reference to 96 is where you park a bike, it has to be in a sidewalk, it's greater than 96 inches. The other section that we need to, to correct is, let's see, 28 dash 610 R4. That one says that the, it says bicycle should be ridden on bike lanes, trails, roadways during safe riding conditions, and sidewalk use should be limited, and so I think that should be restricted.
28, 610?
28, yes, dash 610 R4.
Okay, that'll be on page six of the, of the...
That's on page six, yes, sir. Right above S. And we have a video, a short video, if we can, if we can play. and the location at McKelvey was the highest used in entire program here in South Texas or in the valley. And so, these bikes here will be pedal-assist bikes, and so, we will have them allowed throughout the city. If there's areas that we want to restrict, then we can, of course, we can restrict those areas through geofencing. Ron, you want to add anything?
There, there is no cost for the program to the city at all.
That's what I was going to ask. So, what we have before us is the ordinance just to allow them, the permit fee to bring them in.
Correct.
But the difference between this and the Zaxter, the Zaxter, we had a financial.
That's correct.
Burden, and in this, we have no financial burden.
We have no financial obligation.
And in being dockless, these can be put at the different bicycle racks that we have around town, can be left there.
They could, yes.
And then if they're left elsewhere, they're going to know that that bike has been parked because it's been turned off, is that how that works, and they know to go recollect it?
Well, there's, there's a battery in the back of the, of the bike, and so, those have to be charged 24 hours, every 24 hours, is that?
They, they should be.
Thank you, Ron.
By, by ordinance, they should be serviced at least once a week.
That way we can hear you.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Portem, Commissioners. Yes, by the ordinance, they have to, what's called rebalance, which means they also service them at least once a week. That black battery pack, they actually just swap out a fresh battery. So, these are electric assists, they actually have a small motor, so they'll help, you know, with our wind and humidity and all that here, it actually gives you a little bit of boost. But having the electronic bike also encourages them to service them more, so, yeah, it's kind of a free-flowing environment, but they are required to rebalance them once a, once a week.
And we don't have a helmet ordinance for riding a bike in Harlingen, do we?
No, and I don't believe any other cities that are joining this effort. Right now, we're at nine cities across the region that are doing this.
I just know that the places where they have those little motorized scooters, they do have, some of those cities do have a helmet ordinance, and people just get one and go.
Yeah, some do, some do not.
That's great that we don't have one, I guess.
Will you require, as part of the app, that they provide a, a safety, little video or safety, what do you call it?
Awareness.
Awareness, as part of the app before you, before you use them, especially to children.
You have to watch it.
So a dockless vehicle, I've never heard this phrase before, is that specifically for this bike or this type of bike, or is that a general, a broader definition?
Yeah, dockless, this industry is changing so fast, but the dockless, that term comes from the fact that the bike locks itself. So a traditional dock, that you would take a vehicle and lock it to, you don't require that. It actually locks itself.
How does one purchase the use of this?
So you, there's two ways to do it. The most common way is you download the app, and you pull up the app, and it shows you where the bikes are located through GPS, and again, you can restrict out areas of the city. You go up to it, and there's QR codes on two places, you scan it, and you, you're basically acknowledging that you're about to unlock the bike. You unlock the bike, and then whenever you're done with it, you lock the bike and your ride ends. So it's charging $1 to unlock the bike, and then 15 cents a minute after that. So you can keep it as long as you want, but it tallies up pretty quickly. So you lock it, and once you lock it, it disengages your, your account, so to speak. You, you, and, and what I like about this company as well is that, because some people might forget, and it might run that clock forever, this actually, you load in credits ahead of time. So you might say, well, I'm going to put $10 of credit into my account, so it maxes out how much you can actually spend, and you get that.
So $9 an hour, is that right?
Yes, $9 an hour. They do have a program called the Access Program. Anybody that I think would be used frequently here, but anybody that's qualified for any type of assistance, low-income assistance, any type, state, federal, or even a local program, they're eligible for an access program that reduces that fee by 50%.
Is, will this be on our website, the city website?
Yeah, when I studied some of the different, that y'all were looking at, I know that y'all looked at, and what I liked about the line was the fact that currently with the Zaxter, we had to take it back to that rack.
Yes.
And what I liked about this is, if I rode across town, I could just dock it there at TSTC, pick it up at McKelvey, drop, drop it off at TSTC, and I'm done with it.
Call the ambulance.
What's that?
Call the ambulance.
Call the ambulance, yes. This is being filmed, okay?
It's actually replacing, not traditional bikes, it's actually replacing vehicles.
Correct.
Cars, so, short trips, that's what it's, that's where the electronic assist comes from. So, again, it's, we strategically looked at this, it's still considered a pilot, we're gonna, we're gonna be conservative with it and see if it works for our region. And if it doesn't, this is, we're still considering a short-term solution, there's other models out there that cost, but to have the city have a resource that doesn't cost anything but the monitoring of the situation, that's pretty efficient.
Ron and his team have done a great job vetting the different vendors. Not having a cost associated with bringing these into the city is a benefit to smaller communities that want to also utilize them, because you could potentially ride this from one city to another and drop it off, as long as they're participating in the program. It, it opens up another mode of transportation for folks that otherwise wouldn't have one, so.
And may I ask, is, I mean, is there limits on the bike as far as, you know, is there a weight limit? Just a question.
Yeah, yeah, I, you know, I don't know.
During the training, if you're, you cannot rent, if you're...
I'm sure there is, but this electronic assist, it really, when you take off, it actually propels you a little bit, so, you know, the industry thinks that folks that are maybe more elderly are not prone to ride bicycles, this is kind of an entry point.
And will somebody be able to be on the back of it? Is that a concern? Are they allowed to have somebody?
They're not allowed, but I'm sure people are going to try and get creative. That's why the compliance and monitoring.
So, and, well, that's the question for the law enforcement, if they see somebody misusing that, or will they stop them, prevent them, how do we prevent that as a safety issue?
So again, you know, we, we are definitely going to have to create a lot of education and awareness. Things will happen like that, people will, all these test systems. You know, if it's a provider issue, that's why we selected one provider as a region, so there's only one provider to hold accountable. But from a user standpoint, will people try to sit in the basket or things like that? Obviously, that's a local enforcement issue, but we have to continue to enforce safety and things like that.
But the vendor will also have some responsibility, that, you know, if, if this is the recurring issue, they also have a renewal process.
Sure.
That they have to undertake, and if we have these type of problems, or these things that keep coming up, we don't have to renew them.
And this is a one-year?
So it says. One-year permitting, licensing fee.
So it says, first ride free, how long, how far can you go on a, on the first ride?
I think it's a 30-minute ride free.
30 minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, another question is, on the previous bikes, did y'all have any issues, like getting stolen, or, or abused?
I can't speak directly to that, but I do know that every system has independent issues. There's, there's some variable to that, so.
Okay, so I guess I'll see them on the website.
Okay, so, this has the keyword ordinance in it, so I'll look over at our city attorney, Ms. Allison, is there something you need to read here to make this official? Okay, so, uh, this has the key word ordinance in it. So, uh, I'll look over at our city attorney, Ms. Allison. Is there something you need to read here to make this official?
You would not. Okay. An ordinance, please, sir?
Just gotta tap it.
An ordinance of the city of Harlingen, Texas, amending Chapter twenty-eighth licenses, permits, and miscellaneous regulations by adding a new Article eleven dockless vehicle permits, establishing fees and regulations for a dockless vehicle permit program, providing a savings clause and effective date, and providing a penalty not to exceed five hundred dollars.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like side opposed, motion carries. Move on to item twelve. Consideration and possible action to award.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you.
RFQ.
Thank you, Ron.
Two thousand eighteen.
Leave the bike.
Zero-nine professional engineering services for the Ninth and Thirteenth Street Drainage Improvement Project Phase One to a qualified firm and to authorize the city manager to enter into professional services contract with such firm engineering.
Hello, good evening. On September ninth, the city issued a request for qualifications for licensed, uh, firms with the state of Texas for engineering services for Ninth and Thirteenth, uh, Drainage Improvement Program. This is, uh, being funded through, uh, the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program with FEMA and the Texas Division of Emergency Management. This is part of Phase One. Uh, we, the Phase One will consist of the study, design, and development of plans for the improvement of the drainage system. Uh, we had fourteen firms that responded and they were evaluated based on the criteria on the RFQ packets. Uh, once we ranked, we went through the ranking procedure, uh, we had Tedzie come out as the highest-ranked, uh, firm. Uh, staff recommends authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the highest-ranked firm to meet the requirements of procurement under the grant.
Questions?
Do we check their, uh, references?
Yes.
The, uh, question that I had is on this system. I don't have any problem with, uh, engineering or awarding that. Do we know where the outfall is for this proposed forty-eight-inch loop?
Yes, actually, this will, this will tie into an existing system and it will keep going all the way down to the Arroyo.
Yeah, but a which existing system? Because we currently have a system that's overloaded.
Yes, it ties into the one that come, that comes off of Little Creek and, uh, Greenway Drive.
Okay.
And then it comes along Commerce. And then it comes out to Taft.
Super.
And Little Creek was improved probably ten years ago.
It was improved in two thousand six, two thousand seven.
I remember doing that.
Yes. Jack Brown.
Okay, we have a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Second. All in favor, uh, vote by signifying aye.
Aye.
Uh, like sign opposed, motion carries. Number thirteen, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution in support of the Tennessee Lofts Housing Partners LP, application to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs and for the two thousand nineteen competitive nine percent housing tax credits for the proposed development of the Tennessee Lofts Affordable Rental Housing. Mr. Dan, is that you?
Yes.
I think we lost a one. Did we lose a?
No.
No, we still have three.
Oh.
Right, three and a mayor?
We, we can, we can wait.
It's your choice. You're presenting.
We'll wait. Sorry, Jake. Just a little bit longer. I know those chairs are really comfortable.
We don't have any J. We usually.
Anybody want to say? Awkward silence.
This is the part they edited out.
I don't think they added anything out. He's shaking his head.
Richard tried a bike this time.
He could have been riding the bike.
Right, he could have been right.
Little sample.
Little figurates.
First half hour is free.
Mayor Potem, Commissioners, uh, we have a request before you, uh, from Tennessee Lofts Housing Partners. Uh, they are looking for a resolution in support of a housing development project located at nineteen oh four Tennessee Street. And we have Jake Mooney with, uh, I guess this is the Tennessee Partners?
Yeah.
MRE Capital?
Yeah, it's all MRE Capital. We're, we're the developer of the Baxter Building. Um, which is a quick update on that. It's going well. Uh, we're still planning on in February, probably late February, March, you know, finishing for that project. So we should have windows going in here in about sixty days, which will really start to change the, change the look of the building. Um, this, number thirteen and fourteen, um, I'll just address them both since they're on the, basically the same piece of property. It's property just to the east of the VA Hospital. What we're proposing is doing, uh, two ninety-two unit developments, one being focused exclusively on senior. Uh, both three stories, um, senior building being, uh, contiguous building with elevators. Um, but then through the similar program that we utilized for the Baxter, uh, building downtown. Um, I don't know, I, Jake Mooney, MRE Capital, Leewood, Kansas. I forgot to say that, but, um, really just here for questions. You know, we're not here to approve a specific project or plans or, you know, zoning or any of that kind of thing. It's uh, purely, uh, a resolution supporting the idea of affordable housing in that location.
So, so the resolution is in support of the development, uh, we're talking about thirteen and we'll talk about fourteen in just a minute.
Yes.
Uh, it also has that the city will, uh, reduce permit fees by five hundred dollars. That has to be part of the resolution. Uh, that is part of the application process. Um, so, and staff is recommending approval, uh, of the resolution.
And if I understand this properly, we're just give, we would vote to give you approval and then it goes to the state of Texas.
Yeah.
And they sort through everybody and everything.
Yeah, there's going to be.
You could get it or not.
Absolutely.
When will you know?
This is something that wouldn't be even awarded till July of two thousand nineteen. So we'd be this time next year putting in plans and permits and everything else. So.
Real quick question. Our, you, you opened the gate and said thirteen and fourteen. You said one of them would be, um, for.
If, if we could just address thirteen right now.
I wanted to know which one is going to be the elderly, thirteen or fourteen?
Oh, okay. Um, the, uh, thirteen or fourteen. I believe the, uh, Lonzo Housing Partners is the senior.
Lozano?
The Lozano will be the elderly. Okay, that's all I wanted to make sure.
The other one would be, basically what that is, it would have the income, the, uh, the age restriction.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on item number thirteen? So I'll seek a, uh, a motion to approve.
So moved?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Uh, all in favor by signifying aye.
Aye.
Uh, like sign opposed, motion carries. We will move on to number fourteen. You have the floor again, sir.
And this is for the Lozano Housing Partners?
And this is the consideration and possible action to approve a resolution in support of the Lozano Housing Partners LP, application to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs for two thousand and nineteen competitive nine percent housing tax credits for the proposed development of the Lozano Lofts Affordable Rental Housing.
Similar resolution, uh, similar requirements on the city side. Uh, they're just looking for, this is just part of the application process, no different than we undertook with the Baxter.
And that the, uh, address of the site, proposed site?
Nineteen ten, Tennessee.
Yeah, Tennessee. It's right between Tennessee and Vermont. And actually, it's part of the larger development. We've already talked about donating a portion of the land to connect, uh, Tennessee and Vermont because that was part of a larger plan that, um, Mr. Curness said, uh, be helpful to the city.
Okay. Any questions? We have a motion. We need a second. We have a first and a second. All in favor signify by, uh, voting aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed, like sign, motion carries. Number fifteen, uh, thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Uh, number fifteen, board appointments.
I have none.
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 Okay, there are no board appointments. Uh, we have done sixteen, executive session number seventeen. We've done that.
Mayor Potem, we've done sixteen A.
Sixteen A?
But, uh, we, if, if.
B and C is what we have.
We have to do B and C.
So we need to skip B, C. We need to skip, uh, seventeen, eighteen.
Oh.
All we left is with nineteen.
Okay, so we're, we're skipping sixteen B, sixteen C, seventeen, and eighteen citizens communication. Uh, is there any, has anyone signed up?
I have Edward Rocha, Drainage, to talk about Drainage.
Uh, the name, please?
Uh, Edward Rocha.
Edward Rocha? Okay. If you could please come forward and address your issue. Uh, we give you two minutes and the clock's there. And tell us where you live, please.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies of the Senate. My name's Edward Rocha. I live at five thirty Lake Drive, Harlingen, Texas. Uh, my concern is I moved into a new neighborhood on Lake Drive. I've lived here all my life. And it's the drainage. And, uh, I lived on, I used to live on Ninth and Chip Hog. And also I used to, at one time, on Adams Street. Streets are flooded. Uh, it's already been a couple of occasions, we, the house, waters got into the houses. Had to pull the carpet out twice. Talked to the city and they're saying, oh, yeah, we're going to work on it. And, uh, we're going to put a new drainage system or work on the drainage system. The last time I heard of a drainage system is when they fixed, uh, the drainage for downtown Jackson. I mean, uh, and so, anyway, a house on Lake Drive, that I recently moved into, I lived there six years. It, uh, this last rain came, it, the streets flooded real good. And then it drained. Then the rain came back again. And it flooded, got into the house a little bit. And this has already happened three times just this year alone. So this hundred-year bracket, they talk about it, oh, it only happens a hundred years. It's happening too often. I do have pictures. I did talk to, uh, a lady from the City Works, Lily Gonzalez. She was very helpful. She came and took pictures of the streets and, uh, and the neighborhood. And apparently, I've talked to my neighbors, apparently this has been happening too many times. I just would like, you know, this has been kicked down the, I mean, not only you guys, I mean, you've been here, but it's been kicked out since I was a kid. So this is just going on too long. And we really need to address the issue of the drainage, especially the Austin School area, my area, Ninth Street. And I'm pretty sure there's other areas, but this drainage has been going on, uh, too long. And I would like to, uh, I have pictures. I would like to submit them. Uh, and other than that, I would just like to really look into the drainage system.
Okay, well, thank you for appearing, sir. We, we cannot address you publicly here. But there are city staff here that have certainly heard you and we will accept your photographs.
Thank you very much.
And thank you.
Thank you.
And, uh, there is no other items than the meeting is.
No, I have one more.
Oh, you have one? I'm sorry.
It's, uh, John Omig.
Uh, John?
Mayor Potem, Commissioners, uh, thanks for your time tonight. I just wanted to reiterate what my neighbor, I live on five forty-six Lake Drive. Uh, we've had numerous times that, uh, when we've had heavy rains, uh, the water completely backs up into my driveway and into my house. So, uh, it's been quite a task, as you can imagine, to clean that up. I want to thank, uh, Commissioner Yulehorn for coming out every time, uh, we've had this problem. And I know the city's looking at it. I guess what I'd like to request is a consideration of, uh, an engineer report, an assessment of the drainage system on Lake Drive, on Ninth Street, and on Austin Street. That seems to be where the big problem is. So thank you for your consideration.
Okay, and once again, thank you for addressing us. And city has heard this. We can respond to you, hopefully in your satisfaction. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it, Commissioner.
That's it, okay. Then the, uh, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.